It would have been only a hundred. That's kind of weird. And I have to see why the team over. I don't know if it's because I turned sixty.
Hit the boss on the shoulders.
I thought I'd get my exemption and I get my... Oh, it's fine. Okay, I guess we're a minute late, but we're gonna start the March 25th Planning Commission meeting. According to John Elliott, we're right on time, it's nine o'clock. Okay, so let's go with Rokoff, please.
Gong.
Here.
Millie.
Here.
Elliot.
Here.
Diaz.
Here.
Whitlatch, absent.
Piliano.
Here.
Aguilar.
Here.
Stand with me for the pledge allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Let the record reflect that Mr. Whitlatch has joined us.
So noted.
Let's go with item two, public comment. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item that is not appearing on the agenda. Under state law, matters presented under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the Planning Commission at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comments at the time the item comes up for Planning Commission consideration. So that all interested parties have an opportunity to speak, any person addressing the Planning Commission may be limited at the discretion of the chair. At all times, please use the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Do we have anybody wishing to make public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item. Approval of the minutes.
I move that we accept the minutes as printed.
I'll second that.
Rokoff, please.
Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Piliano.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
This has been approved.
Mr. Chairman, I have to recuse myself on four B for the Embry Group.
I am not.
Our company took a commission on the deal, so you work for me, so I think you have to recuse yourself, Wayne.
For that, for this one, for this right here?
He works for the broker and...
It would be best if he did recuse himself.
Okay. I agree with myself.
I'm not going to jail.
Yeah, just remind me and we'll poo those when we get to... Okay, so let me read the partial map, public hearing. A, four A is tentative parcel map number PPM fourteen dash zero four seven, this is Annie Natara or James D. Self. Four B, tentative parcel map number PPM fifteen zero zero one, Embry Asset Group, Tension Aaron Ramirez, Julie Van Villett, and William Van Villett. Item four C, tentative parcel map number PPM fourteen zero five zero, Hornix Ranch LLC Lane Engineering and Company. Item D, tentative parcel map number PPM fourteen zero four two nine, John Havazanian, Neil Zerlin, Lance Varian Company. Tentative map number PPM fourteen dash zero three zero, John Havazian, Neil Zerlin, Lance Varian Company. Item four F, tentative parcel map number PPM fifteen zero zero four, Kim Kittenger, Neil Zerlin, Lance Varian Company. Okay, apologize if I'm mispronouncing any of the names. I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing on the partial map, agenda item, agenda item, and there's not gonna be any staff report unless you want it. So I know that Bill, you're gonna recuse yourself on item...
B, rather, B.
What we're gonna do is that when we get to B, I'm gonna hold out and do that last, okay?
Okay. Mr. Chair, I'm gonna have to recuse myself on items D and E.
And we'll put those at the tail end. Okay, let's go with... The public comment is open. Anybody wish to make any comments on any of these items or wish that they be pooed for discussion? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna go ahead and close the public hearing and we're gonna go through the partial map. We're gonna start with four A. Four A, this is approved, it's approved category exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act and the State Sequel Guideline pursuant to Title XIV California Code Regulation, Section 15303, Class 3 pertaining to limited number of new small facilities or structures and conditionally approved tentative parcel map number PPM fourteen dash zero four seven and waiver of final map. Item four A. Do we have discussion or motion?
I move that we approve the categorical exemption consistent with SEQUA and state SEQUA guidelines and conditionally approve tentative parcel map PPM fourteen dash zero four seven.
Second that.
Rokoff, please.
Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Piliano.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
This time, I'll recuse myself.
I'll do yours last, Bill.
And another one.
Yeah, we're gonna go...
I see, okay.
We're gonna go to C now. Tentative parcel map number PPM fourteen dash zero five zero. This is to approve a category exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQUA, and the State SEQUA Guideline pursuant to Title XIV California Code Regulation, Section 15303, Class 3 pertaining to limited number of new small facility or structures and conditionally approved tentative parcel map number PPM fourteen zero five zero and waiver of final map. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve tentative parcel map, PPM fourteen dash zero four with categorical exemption with the SEQUA Guidelines Act will state and conditionally approve tentative map and waiver of final map.
I'll second that.
It's been moved in second. Rokoff, please.
Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Piliano.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
Item has been approved. Now, let's go to the item F. Four F, tentative parcel map PPM fifteen dash zero zero four. This is to approve a category exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act and the State SEQUA Guideline pursuant to Title XIV California Code Regulation, Section 15303, Class 3 pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures and conditionally approved tentative parcel map number PPM fifteen dash zero zero four.
I'll move that we condition... Excuse me. Approved tentative parcel map number PPM fifteen dash zero zero four. It's categorically exempt with SEQUA guidelines and conditionally approved tentative parcel map, PPM fifteen dash zero zero four.
I second that motion.
Moved in second. Rokoff, please.
Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Piliano.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
Okay, so now let's go to item four B and Mr. Whitlatch. Four B is tentative parcel map fifteen dash zero zero one. This is to approve a category exemption and consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act and the State SEQUA Guideline pursuant to Title XIV California Code Regulation, Section 15303, Class 3 pertaining to limited number of new small facility or structures and conditionally approved tentative parcel map number PPM fifteen dash zero zero one. Do we have a motion on this?
I'll make the motion to... For categorical exemption consistent with SEQUA and... And conditionally approve the tentative parcel map, PPM fifteen dash zero zero one.
Second?
Second that.
They moved in second. Rokoff, please.
Gong.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Piliano.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
Okay, we're moving on to item D. If you could bring those guys back.
D and E, right?
D and E, yes.
The reason for my recusal is I had property in this group one time.
And Bill, you don't have anything?
Not that I know of, so I guess... That means it's no.
Yeah, well, ignorance is blessed sometimes.
We're back, just like ghosts.
Okay, we're taking on the item four D now. This is the PPM fourteen dash zero two nine. This is to approve a category exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act and State SEQUA Guideline pursuant to Title XIV California Code Regulation, Section 15303, Class 3 pertaining to limited number of new small facility or structures and conditionally approved tentative parcel map number PPM one four dash zero two nine with a final map waiver. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve tentative parcel map number PPM fourteen dash zero two nine and conditionally approve the tentative, the final map waiver.
I'll second that.
It's been moved in second. Rokoff, please.
Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Piliano.
Yes.
Aguilar.
We have one more to go. Four E, this is PPM fourteen dash zero three oh. This is to approve the category exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act and the State SEQUA Guideline pursuant to Title XIV California Code Regulation, Section 15303, Class 3 pertaining to limited number of new small facilities or structures and conditionally approve tentative parcel map number PPM fourteen dash zero three zero with a final map waiver. Do we have a motion or...
I'll make that motion that we approve tentative parcel map, PPM, am I on the right one? You have fourteen dash zero three zero. It's a categorical exemption with SEQUA guidelines and conditionally approve tentative parcel map, PPM fourteen dash zero three zero.
I second.
Final map waiver. And that's okay, we have a second from Nancy.
Been moved in second by Nancy. Rokoff, please.
Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Piliano.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
Hey, thank you. And now can someone bring Ed back? Okay, we're gonna move on to item five. This is the public hearing. We got five A. This is a special use permit number PSP fourteen dash zero five five. It's the Fresno MSA Limited Partnership doing business as Verizon Wireless, Rebecca Anderson and Naomi Vida. This is category exemption, a special use permit to allow a seventy-foot-tall monopine-type wireless telecommunications facility with twelve antennas and support equipment on a one thousand six hundred square feet leased portion of a nineteen point six two acre site in the AE dash twenty zone. This site is located approximately five hundred twenty feet east of Northwest Street and seven hundred feet north of Prosperity Avenue, Tulare. And Dana, I guess you're the contact, it's all yours.
Chairman Gong and commissioners, as mentioned, this is a seventy-foot-tall monopine-type cell tower and it's located just adjacent to the city of Tulare on the west side. The project is categorically exempt from SEQUA pursuant to Title XIV, Section 15303, Class 3, and this project is compatible with this exemption because the monopine cell tower will be erected on a sixteen hundred square foot leased portion of the twenty acre site and does not involve the use of hazardous substances and does not exceed twenty five hundred square feet in floor area. Entitlement is found in Section sixteen two B of Ordinance three fifty-two, which allows radio, microwave, and television towers in the agricultural zones. The project is located, as I mentioned, within the urban area and urban development boundary of the city of Tulare. The project was found to be consistent with these applicable Tulare County general plan The location is approximately five hundred and twenty feet west of Northwest Street and seven hundred feet north of Prosperity Avenue in Tulare. And we'll go on to the next slide, I guess. Existing zoning is AE twenty. Surrounding properties are zoned RA forty-three, RA one hundred, and AE twenty, and the city of Tulare is to the south and the east. Rural residences and agriculture are the land use types surrounding the project site, and the project site itself contains agriculture and there is one storage building on the An aerial view. The seventy-foot-tall wireless telecommunications facility will be a monopine with twelve panel antennas and support equipment, the equipment shelter and emergency generator. This will all be located on a sixteen hundred square foot leased portion of the twenty acre site in the AE twenty zone. As mentioned, it's within the urban area and urban development boundaries of Tulare. This faux pine tree has been agreed upon between the applicant and the city of Tulare, and the faux pine tree is proposed in order to minimize visual impacts to the area. The applicant has provided some photo simulations of the proposed project, and the star in the center would be the location of the cell tower, and the numbers one, two, three, and four are the locations from which these photographs were taken, and there is a simulated faux pine from these various angles. This is the site plan. The facility will enhance and expand the Verizon Wireless network in the vicinity of Tulare, thereby improving communication service for its existing and prospective customers. The facility will serve the northwestern area of Tulare, including the surrounding residents and travelers along the nearby streets. The new tower is being proposed because it was determined through research that there are not any co-location opportunities within this area that would meet the coverage objective. And the access is provided by a twelve-foot-wide utility and access easement from Northwest Street. Here's another view of the tower, the equipment shelter, and it would be enclosed completely with a six-foot fence topped with barbed wire and twelve-foot-wide locked gates for access. Diesel generator is proposed for emergency backup, and there's enough space on the site for the vehicles, for maintenance vehicles and during construction, and the facility would be unmanned with just periodic maintenance once or twice a month. This is the view of the pine tower. This subject property is under Williamson Act Contract Number eighty-eight oh three, Preserve Number three oh eight three, and a Williamson Act conformity analysis was performed for the site, and it was determined that the proposal conforms to the Uniform Rules for Agricultural Preserves. This project was noticed according to the law. I do want to mention that I did receive one telephone inquiry from an adjacent property owner, and after I explained what the project was and where the location of the tower was, she was satisfied with that information. And staff is recommending that your planning commission approve a categorical exemption consistent with SEQUA and conditionally approve special use permit number PSP fourteen dash zero five five. And that concludes staff's report.
Comments from the board here? Yes, thanks, go ahead.
First of all, I commend the applicant and our staff for the beautiful tree. We've gone through a lot of work on that, and I think it looks very nice, so thank you for choosing to do that. My question is, where's the closest towers? Do you have any idea?
I don't have that information, but the applicant would once the public hearing is opened.
They could answer that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Questions up here? All right, I'm gonna open the public hearing or testimony, so if you could come up, please give your name and address for the record. Is the applicant here or they wish to speak?
Good morning, planning commissioners. My name's Naomi Vidal, representing Verizon Wireless. My address is PO Box two zero eight eight West Sacramento, California, nine five six nine one. Thank you for hearing our proposal this morning. This is an area of needed Verizon Wireless to serve surrounding residents, travelers along the nearby streets, and to provide good in-building coverage to the residential community in the northwestern area of Tulare and Tulare County. This network development will increase public safety within the area while also improving areas with poor service. We hope you approve this application today. And then your question about the other towers in the area, when we first did the research, there were no towers in the area that we needed. I believe, I would have to double-check for sure, though, but it's several miles away from this location.
Thank you.
Didn't we just approve in the tower right there along...
By the gin.
By the gin, yeah.
That's why I was asking. It's up...
But it wasn't Verizon, so...
Oh, I don't know.
Was it? I think it was AT&amp;T.
It was Brand X.
I thought it was Verizon.
Oh, you think it's Verizon?
I thought it was Verizon.
It seems like we are gonna be doing a number of these towers, and whatever we called into play here, whether it was city of Tulare zoning or Tulare County, we need to have this tree thing, this aesthetics on all of them. I mean, that should at least be out there on the table for every one of these, because right now, you know, you'll drive up and down ninety-nine, you'll see one here and one there. In the future, those things are gonna be everywhere. And I don't know what's gonna happen when the technology changes and who's responsible for removing them all, but at some point, that might be a consideration, too. But for now, I think we need to get a consistent aesthetics policy that the county puts forward on every one of these. I don't think Verizon has a problem with it, and I mean, they wanna, it's good PR for them and it's good, you know, for the people that have to be in that area and live nearby and see it all the time. I just think the aesthetics policy makes a lot of sense.
You. Anybody else in the public wish to make any comments of for or against the project? Seeing none, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public comment section and entertain
I'll make a motion that we approve a categorical exemption consistent with SEQUA and that we conditionally approve the special use permit for PSP fourteen dash zero five five.
I'll second.
They moved in second. Rokoff, please.
Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Piliano.
Aguilar.
Motion has been approved for PSP fourteen dash zero five five. Okay, moving on to the next item. Five B. This is for a special use permit number PSP fourteen fifteen dash zero zero five, Sunwest Fruit Company, Horns Gas and Company. This is category exemption and special use permit number PSP fifteen dash zero zero five to allow the installation of one eighteen thousand gallon propane tank. The site is located, let's see, on the south side of Avenue three seven six, approximately four thousand feet east of Road sixty, east of London. The contact is Dana.
Thank you, Chairman Gong. As mentioned, this is a item up here. Excuse me one moment. I have two of these and got them in the wrong order. Okay, here we are. Eighteen thousand gallon propane tank east of London on a three thousand square foot portion of an eighty acre parcel, and this project is categorically exempt from SEQUA pursuant to Title XIV, Section 15303, Class 3. And the project is compatible with this exemption because the propane tank is considered an accessory structure to the existing orchard, and the project will not have any permanent impact on the number of vehicle trips or employees at the project site. Entitlement is found in Section sixteen of Ordinance Number three fifty-two, which allows flammable liquids stored above ground for agricultural purposes in a quantity greater than ten thousand gallons only if a special use permit is first approved. The project is consistent with these general plan policies. The project is located in the Rural Valley Lands Plan, and the land use element is Valley In addition, the project has met the development standards for above-ground storage of flammable liquids as detailed in Section fifteen A five E of the Ordinance Code. As previously mentioned, the project site is located at the, on the south side of Avenue three seventy-six, approximately four thousand feet east of Road sixty, east of London, and contains agriculture and a storage shed in the southwest corner of the property. Here is the zoning for the property, AE forty. Surrounding properties are AE forty. They all contain agriculture and rural residences. It's an aerial view. The propane tank will be located approximately eleven hundred feet south of Avenue three seventy-six in the southwest corner of the property, sixty-five feet north of the shed, which is located in the southwest corner of this property. The nearest off-site residence is greater than one quarter mile distant, and the project is consistent with all of the AE twenty regulations pertaining to the zone. This is the site plan of the tank itself. This use permit, as mentioned, is for the volume of flammable liquids being greater than ten thousand gallons, and the installation of the system requires approximately twelve employees and will last four to six weeks. The utilization of the project itself is seasonal and will occur only during freeze events, and the duration will be approximately eight to ten hours at a time. This is a aerial view showing the approximate location of the tank situated on the parcel itself and the distances to the shed that's on-site and the off-site residences. This project was noticed according to the law, and staff has not received any comments regarding this project, and the recommendation is to approve the categorical exemption consistent with SEQUA and conditionally approve special use permit number PSP fifteen dash zero and conditionally approve special use permit number PSP 15-005. And that concludes staff's report.
Thank you. Any comments up here?
Yes, I, on the 10,000 gallon limit, is that a local limit, or is that statewide? Or, I mean, it seems like we're getting quite a few that want larger than 10,000 gallons, and that's the only reason they're here.
Yeah, it's part of our zoning code, so that's our local requirement.
Comments? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public comment portion of this meeting. Can, would the applicant like to speak on behalf of the project? Okay, anybody opposed to the project? Would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, I guess we'll close the public testimony, so entertain a motion or discussion from the, up here.
These are pretty consistent, but, and this is actually a small tank. I'll make the motion that we approve a categorical exemption consistent with SEQA, and we conditionally approve a special use permit PSP 15-005.
I'll second it.
I'll let you say it.
Okay, it's been moved in second row call, please.
Gong?
Yes.
Billy?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
BS?
Yes.
Whitatch?
Yes.
Eliana?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
PSP 15-005 has been approved. Moving on to item 5C. This is a special use permit number PSP 15-006, Aramont Citrus and Dorn Gas and Company. Again, this is category exemption and special use permit to allow the installation of one 30,000 gallon propane tank. The site is located on the west side of Row 156, approximately one-half mile north of Avenue 360, north of Isaya, and again, the contact is Dana.
And again, thank you, Chairman Gong. And you've already introduced the project, it's very much like the last one, so we'll continue. It is categorically exempt from SEQA pertaining to Section 15303, Class 3. And this project is consistent with that exemption because it is an accessory structure to the on-site agriculture. Entitlement is found in Section 16 2B, where anything exceeding 10,000 gallons in the agricultural zones requires a special use permit. And it is consistent with these general plan policies. Here is a vicinity map showing the location. Is the zoning, oops, I passed the zoning, there's the zoning. There's the zoning. AE20 on this parcel. Surrounding properties are AE20 and AE40. And again, they contain agriculture and rural residences. Thing, there's the aerial. Does show that there is a, now, running along the north corner of this project. The project will not impact that. And here, again, is a site plan of the location of the tank, and this site plan includes all of the underground pipelines that will carry the propane to the wind machines. Location of the tank. As indicated on the site plan, the tank will be located 1,150 feet west of Road 156 to assure that, you know, put some distance between it and any possible impact from neighbors' accidents. And access is provided via a ranch road. And again, installation in four to six weeks, 12 employees, operates only during times of freeze, and the public notification was according to the law. And planning staff is recommending approval of the categorical exemption and the special use permit PSP 15-006. And that concludes staff's report.
Thank you. Any comments from up here? I'm gonna open the public testimony portion, which, does anybody wish to speak for this project or in opposition of this project? Please come up. Seeing none, we're gonna go ahead and, I'm gonna close the public testimony and bring it back to the board for a motion.
I'll make the motion that we approve a categorical exemption consistent with SEQA and conditionally approve a special use permit PSP 15-006.
I second that.
It's moved in second row call, please.
Gong?
Yes.
Billy?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
BS?
Yes.
Whitatch?
Yes.
Eliana?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
Okay, 15-006 have been approved. Okay, we're gonna move on to item 5D. The special use permit number PSP 14-064. Helena Hughes. This is a category exemption and a special use permit number PSP 14-064 to allow Aurora Home occupant, occupation and contractor's storage yard from her home, utilizing the western area of the property for parking, delivery trailers for her business of California party rentals, and the eastern portion of the property for contractor's storage yard, identified as million-dollar roofing, doing business as M&amp;M Roofing, which the applicant partner is operating by parking his truck and dump trailers. The site is AE20, exclusive agricultural 20 acre minimum zone, and surrounding areas are zone AE20. The site is located on the north side of the intersection of Avenue 272 and Road 122, up a private driveway, 313, 313 feet to an area of 2.6 acres south of Isaya. And I guess we have a new contact person here.
Chairman Gong, planning commission, Aaron Bock, chief planner, RMA. In Andrew Pacheco's absence, I'll be speaking today, but he still is the main point of contact. As you can see, Velma has handed out three letters in support of this project, so if you could approve those, that'd be appreciated. This, this application is for a special use permit PSP 14-064, stated for a rural home occupation and contractor's storage yard for her home. The site is in the AE20 exclusive 20 acre minimum zone, and the surrounding areas are zoned AE20. The project has been determined to be categorically exempt under SEQA, and the project is compatible with the exemption because the provisions for the home occupation allow the owner occupant to operate a commercial use from a separate building in that zone. This vicinity map shows the project location at the north side of the intersection of Avenue 272 and Road 122. It's up a private driveway of length of 313 feet to the project location, which is area of 2.6 acres south of Isalia. Public notice for the project was mailed to the surrounding property owners, and as of to this date, we have received one phone call. It was not necessarily of concern, but just for clarification purposes, of which case we have not received any further information from that person. As stated, the applicant has requested a special use permit to allow rural home occupation and contractor's storage yards. Those are allowed under Section 16, Part 2B of the Ordinance Number 352, under the Tulare County zoning ordinance. It allows those in all the zones, including AE20, including AE40, AE80, et cetera. So, it's an allowed use only if a special use permit is first granted. Here is an aerial photo of the site. The site contains a house, three barns, storage buildings, two sheds, and the requisite domestic well and septic tanks. No conditions of approval were recommended by the county public works for this project. Here is the site plan. Basically, the site plan itself has direct access to Avenue 272. The property is large enough, as you can see, to include both those uses on the site. The general plan update policies that are relevant to the project include land use policy, LU 4.6, which requires that commercial storage facilities, including mini, mini storage, be screened from view through landscaping buffers or other natural landscaping features that are also included in the site plan and do exist on-site today. Viewing the site from Road 122, you can begin to see the screening. You can also see the residential location to the front. So, the evergreens do shield along the southern side of the property all views into the site. There's, next slide is of the applicant's home itself. That would be really all anybody would see from 272. Again, here is the storage yard and the contractor's yard. You can see it's an all-weather surface, and the home occupation itself is for the actual pulling and use of the trailers. Again, here's a good visual of the screening, and also the trailer use on-site.
Questionnaire?
Yes.
That all-weather surface, is that DG or?
It's a mix of gravel and DG that has been reused over time.
In case it ever rains, I'm wondering what, what kind of drainage, we don't have anything going into Cameron Creek or anything like that, do we, or?
No, as we stated, public works had not requested any conditions of approval for the site. They thought that was adequate.
Okay, thanks.
So, with that, planning staff does recommend the motion for approval for the categorical exemption and for, to conditionally approve special use permit PSP 14-064. Thank you.
Before you go, what's the city's long-range plans for zoning for that area? And we didn't get a letter from the city.
We did not get a letter from the city. They were generally okay with that, with the project as it sits today. I couldn't tell you off the top of my head what the long-range plans are for zoning in that area, except that I do know that the southern side of Isalia, from their general plan, did wanna generally stay agriculture and nature.
This has been in business a long time?
This has been in business a long time. In fact, we were going out there for a patio permit, as I understand it, and we saw the additional use out there for the roofing company, so we're just trying to bring them into compliance. In fact, the neighbor who called has lived out there for 12 years, and he said, "What's this new use?" And we said, "Well, it's been there for at least 12 years."
Okay. Any other questions up here? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public comment portion of this meeting with the applicant or would like to speak on behalf of their projects? Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Mike Mandonsa, M&amp;M Roofing, 12198 Avenue 272, Isaya. The one question was asked about the surface of the property. There's eight inches of blacktop grappings in there on 92% of the property. So, as far as water drainage and stuff, we don't have a problem with that. We don't have mud or anything that'll be tracked to the road. The existing road end is all blacktop. Front of the house is blacktop.
Where's the water drained to?
It drains to the south end, and the evergreen trees on the south, 90% of the water goes into the trees, and what little bit is left goes into Gene Field. Just, it's just farm, farmland, is all it is. That's about all I gotta say.
All right, thank you. Anybody opposed to this project? Would like to make comments? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing, and we'll bring it back to the board for discussion or a motion.
Make a comment. This is one of those existing, the existing uses that really doesn't seem to be appropriate. It's a fairly intense commercial use in agricultural zone, and I'm not necessarily against it because it's important to bring it into compliance, but it is what it is, and it's not agriculture, not even close, and it's not even, I'm surprised the city of Isaya didn't say anything. So, I have a real hard time with projects like this, because the land was reasonable, and I'm in business, and it's probably a good place to put it in a business, but, I don't know, it just doesn't go well with me, the whole concept, so. And I don't even farm, Nancy.
Any other comments?
If this is to bring this property into compliance, how long have they been in business, operating?
12 years, it's been.
12 years.
So, I mean, to Bill, it's damned if we do, and to them, it's damned if we don't, so. It's kinda like, are we gonna, how do we get these upfront so that they apply for this type of business before they establish for 12 years? I guess that's the question.
Well, the, the easy answer is that people do know they need to comply with the law, and they do come to the counter and ask for permits when they, when they do know they need to comply with the law. The harder answer is that it's a difficult process through enforcement, and I think generally like this, this case, where you go out and you look at a permit, and then you see additional uses that aren't necessary in compliance. You try to bring them into compliance, and like, through all things, through enforcement, we get people to comply better with the law. So, the, the movement we're making overall with the building department and the planning department is through enforcement to get more people to know that if they don't comply, they're gonna have to go through a much more expensive process, and that it's not necessarily easy.
I guess we just need to let folks know what it is, you know, what the law is and how to comply.
You know, RMA has done a great job in getting rid of the backlog of non-compliant uses, and so, you know, I have to commend, RMA is, is on top of it. You know, this is one that's kinda isolated, hard to see, but I still don't like it, but no, it's, it's not because of RMA, they, they do agree.
Well, again, the site that is being used for this purpose is two acres on an AE20 zone, so the rest of the remaining is basically an agricultural use, so it's, it's limited.
If I, if I may, yeah, that, that goes back to, I think it was, the parcel was created back in the early 70s, and as Aaron indicated, it's AE20.
20.
20. And there's a number of, it was a small two-and-a-half acre parcels. There's a number of five or six of those that were created. So, it was kind of a, it was a gut check for me as well, Bill. I, I look at the intensity there, but it's established, they've, they've screened it. I, I've driven past there many times, didn't even realize it was there myself, and the parcel itself really isn't available to be farmed. The only way any of it really could have been farmed is if the existing acreage immediately adjacent, you know, expanded somewhat, because it's surrounded by, by Cameron Creek on the lot, it's, it's just not a farmable thing. So, it really goes back to the, in, at this time, RMA wouldn't be proposing a parcel map like that in, for, for those types of uses. So, we're, again, it goes back, you know, we have to clean up where, where, where our legacy has brought us to this point. We try to get things in compliance. Going forward, it wouldn't, I don't think this would occur again.
I have a question, Aaron. Were both businesses 12 years?
Not, yes, yes, the answer is yes.
And I agree, I go by there a lot. I honestly, I know these people, I didn't even know that was there, so I guess I'm guilty too. I should've known.
Well, and also going back to Mr. Elliott's question, I think by actually forcing these people to pay the money to bring them into compliance, not looking the other way, not doing enforcement, will help eventually everybody realize, at least in this immediate area and in other areas overall, that we will force you to come into compliance. So it's a costly endeavor either now or later, and it's gonna be more painful later.
Well, I think these kinda actions too, you know, to other people looking in those areas, they'll know, you know, if they're savvy, they'll go around and ask and see what the situation is, so. This is a good course of action, given the, you know, the conditions we're in right now.
And Hector Guerra, Chief Environmental Planner, one of the beneficial actions that will occur when we do find someone who's not compliant, and we bring them into compliance, is that now we have the power of the conditions of approval, which will then ensure that environmental compliance also occurs, whether it's water approaching Cameron Creek, you know, dust and hazardous waste materials, anything that may occur, not necessarily applicable to this project, but overall, that now has a, they are on the radar, and they have to comply, so that is a benefit.
And just to finally say that this was our building department that was going out because they were wanting to permit a patio, and they were trying to follow the rules there. This wasn't the case that neighbors were complaining, there was a nuisance, there was anything, so we're just following through the correct way. It might've had a different course of action had there been complaints about the property, but there are no complaints about the property.
Just one little point, and I really tried not to hear this from the applicant, but when I asked him, "Where does the water go from the site?", and I like the tree area, but then when he mentioned it goes onto his neighbor's property, I believe that this would be a good time to fix that, because you can't let your water, rainwater drain from your property onto your neighbors, and, you know, I'm not gonna hold it up because of that, but it's, you know, sometimes neighbors change, and that guy could be a nightmare for these people. So, correct me if I'm wrong.
You need to retain the water on-site.
And we will therefore add that as a condition of approval.
Okay. Are you ready, Mr. Chair?
I am. No other comments? I guess I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, then, with that, I would make a motion that we approve a categorical exemption consistent with SEQA and conditionally approve special use permit PSP 14-064 with the amended conditions. Approval.
I'll second that.
Move in second, Roqar, please.
Gong?
Yes.
Phillies?
Yes.
Elliott?
Yes.
Diaz?
Yes.
Willatch?
Reluctantly, yes.
Eleano?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
Hey, we approved PSP 14-064 suite by. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on to item six, the director's report.
Thank you. Yesterday, the Board of Supervisors, the Board authorized and approved a reorganization of the RMA Planning Branch as well as the Public Works Branch. One of the key things is the Public Works, but I'll touch on the Planning Branch. We've rebranded the name to Economic Development and Planning Branch as opposed to the Planning Branch, because of the emphasis that the Board has as being open for business and being business-friendly. So with the emphasis of economic development, we've renamed the branch. We've also created a, for the Permit Center, we've created a separate unit for the Permit Center, because our focus, that's the public face of the RMA, and we're going to have more interaction there and more things going over the counter at there, rather than, we have two counters right now. We have the Administration Office as well as the Permit Center. We're going to transition everything to coming through the Permit Center. Then, and with that move, we've had a promotion for Jason Garcia-Leboue to Chief Planner, and his duties will be in the Permit Center as well, and he'll be running the Permit Center. Then in the...
He's a very good choice. He's extremely knowledgeable and helpful.
Absolutely. You know, he, we try to get people to find their niche and their fit, so to speak, and he's really found it the last couple of years at the Permit Center. That's really where he can shine, and he's done good things there, and we look forward to continued improvement there. So it's a constant improvement. It is a tough job, dealing with, you know, you never know what might walk through the door, and sometimes things go smooth, and sometimes things don't go so smooth, but he...
But he has a nice way about him, so.
Absolutely, because we're there not to say no. Certain things can't be done, but we find options. We try to find other ways to get to the end result that the person's looking for. Often, they can't do exactly what they want, but maybe there's some sort of an optional way of kinda getting towards what they want. In the, in our project process, planning and project processing has been split into two units now. We have the processing, Aaron is the great leader there, where we're getting these projects in and out, and he's also got an emphasis on the community plan updates, and we've approved two this year, and we've got nine underway. We're planning to bring four to five additional ones this year to the Planning Commission and onto the Board, and then the remainder can keep going. So that's gonna be emphasis for project processing, will be community plans and the projects as they come in, the land entitlement projects as they come in. So what that left is, we split it off a special projects division, which will be focused on general plan implementation, such as the housing element, SB 244 compliance, Williamson Act issues and non-renewals, cancellations, those types of things. Samarah will be under that. So with that, we've promoted Dave Bryant. I'm sure you all know Dave Bryant. He's been, he's a great RMA planner that's got long history with us, and he's doing a great job. So he's gonna be in charge of that particular management group, the special projects. And then the other move we did was, we took marijuana enforcement, and we put it under our Building and Housing instead of having it as a separate unit. It's under Dennis Lehman in Building and Housing. So we look forward, I think it's gonna be, provide a much more efficient way to manage all this and keep everything moving at the same time and make it more efficient for it, you know, and there will be tweaks, and we're not building silos between these, because all the planners will be interacting amongst us, but this is kind of a way to organize and manage the workflow. And with that, I'll pass it over to our new, not interim anymore, no longer interim, but he is official, our Public Works Director.
Yeah, thanks, Mike. Mike Bond, RMA Public Works. This was a reorganization, really from a structural standpoint, almost a complete redo on Public Works. And Public Works was divided into roughly close to a dozen different divisions, and that tended to, over a long period of time, isolate a lot of our functions and operations. It was, it's now been restructured into three management groups, and the first one is what was called operations. It's now really road maintenance, and it's a dedicated operation for all kinds of things from our annual chip seal overlays and a number of, we have our soils lab there, we have our sign shop there. What was, I think, a very wise decision, our construction management was really run out of that operations. Construction management needed to be brought over into the Management Group Two, which is all of the design, and it, all of the development services are housed in now Management Group Two, but now construction management is part of that operation. And so it integrates from the very beginning of projects at the very early stages, where it's just a concept, through preliminary engineering, through design, and then when it goes into construction. That's now, will become a very seamless process, where all of the value that we have been seeing in construction now can be brought in the very front end on design, with the objective of, A, making it much more efficient, but also from a cost-saving standpoint, because we can, I think, look forward to fewer changes in construction, since they, you know, those benefits have been kind of dialed in at the very front end. So that's a major step for those two management groups. Management Group Three is really kind of everything else, so to speak. It has, we call it special programs, because it includes the airport, Sequoia Field, transit, flood control. We have zones of benefit, which are really our sewer and water systems. We have eight sewer systems, four water systems, that the county really owns and operates. And then there are assessment districts. There, currently, we have about 25 different assessment districts that are either landscape and drainage, or they're road maintenance, so they're really tied to the subdivision developments in the county. So that new structure, I think, is going to allow us, as with, as Mike said, a lot more efficiency and just an overall, a better approach to managing what is a collection of 41 different funds, funding sources. So if you look in the budget, it's a pretty, very diverse and wide assortment of functions that Public Works provides. That was the structural part of it, but we also, I think, highlighted some of the accomplishments. And I just, you know, when I looked at all the accomplishments, it was obvious to me that the collaboration with the Planning Branch and the Administrator Branch has really solidified now, because I couldn't really pick out any project that Public Works did exclusively. We rely heavily on planning. Complete Streets is a great example, where Aaron's worked on the community plan update, or really going at a very fast pace, and that involves community meetings and so on that Public Works is now involved with. So it's becoming, RMA, the new RMA, I'll call it, is very much an integrated agency now, and Public Works is very happy to be part of that program.
Boss is here, so be careful what you say.
Mike, you were gonna mention the Mineral King Bridge update?
I'll give you an update. We met with Caltrans on, yesterday, so I haven't gotten the details yet, I haven't been briefed on it, but I'll give you something in writing this morning yet.
I'll be brief. Not much going on. Yesterday, no, Monday, was the end of the appeal period for that last EIR that you approved, the Deer Creek Mine Project. There was no challenge, so kudos to you. We do have another EIR on the cusp of releasing, probably the end of this week, if not next week, for Gerald's Mini Storage, and we released a mitigating negative declaration for the Tulley River Tribe that we prepared in-house Monday or Tuesday, I believe, just so many days going on. It was Tuesday, so that's where playfield, recreational playfields out there, so that's much needed in that area, and we're continuing to work on our environmental documents for the community plans. That's it.
Aaron Bach, Chief Planner. Just real quickly, we are moving forward on both Tipton and Strathmore's community plans at this time. We were in Tipton on Monday night. We will continue to meet with the communities until they're satisfied with our community plans, and we'll move forward to the Board. As far as complete streets, we did complete six last year. We are working on six currently, and so those will also be, will go to the Board a little bit differently than they did last year. Last year, we kinda did them all at once. This year, they'll go in with the community plans themselves and really be part of the circulation elements of each of those. So we are working on EIRs and the community plans concurrently, and we're hoping to get those out over the next month. So, like I said, I'll give you a heads up when we bring four GPAs to you at one time, so you have a little bit of time to read through those, but we are moving pretty fast and pretty, you know, we're pushing the communities too with the workshops, and getting them to get out to every one of these is pretty tough, but they're doing it too, so we'll stay up with them.
Can I just say one quick thing before we go?
Absolutely.
Just, you know, I think last meeting I mentioned that I went to the open house for the, that recycling with the dairy and the ethanol plant, and what an amazing closed system. We literally had lunch next to the tank while that's going on, not a single bad odor. And I was thinking that, you know, I don't know how the county, we can't endorse the company, but we should, we should do something to endorse the process, encouraging people to do that, because, I mean, there's, how can anybody be against that? Because you get rid of the methane completely, and so I...
We are encouraging that, and that's a, I believe that's the ultimate solution for our dairy industry, and we're gonna see more and more of that as, as we get the first few that are installed and built, this generation, because there's been digesters that have been around forever, for many years. This new generation of digesters are so vastly improved over what was done a decade or two ago. So as these come up, this is one of the prime examples, the one at the Pixie Biogas, but we're looking at that. There's interest, there is interest, there's multiple developers that are showing interest in the area. We've got a couple that have some sites, there's a couple sites in Tulare County that they're looking at, so it's definitely something that, it's the future. I truly believe that, and we'll see more of those coming through.
Almost like an economic development kind of thing, encouraging people to do that.
It is, and we don't have that authorization to give any incentives to us, other than that we stream, the biggest incentive we have for Tulare County, well, for digesters, we have the cows. They gotta go where the cows are. But the processing, the way that we can process permits and environmental things, that's so quick and so smooth, we get, just like a couple weeks ago, when the mine operator was here, talking about that he is so glad when he works with Tulare County, because we're able to do the environmental document in-house in a substantially reduced amount of time for less money than anywhere else in the state. So we provide that for developers, and we provide a streamlined permitting process, that we get projects in and out. We combine the process while we're getting the entitlements to come to the Planning Commission, we're already reviewing building permits and getting all that lined up, so once you make, take action, they're ready to go. The building permits are waiting down Mooney Boulevard, as soon as you take action, they pick them up and they start going. So that's how we can do that, you know, and we are, and I really think that we will see the numbers of digesters growing in the coming years.
I don't know if it could be part of our animal confinement ordinance?
Just real quickly, what we are looking to do as part of our community plans, like we did with the Travers, to expand on the, or limit the use permits, so more things by right, and so we'd be looking to allow digesters by right, subject to the SEQA requirements in the, within the UDBs.
And you can have multiple dairies take their manure there without stumbling blocks.
Yeah, clustering the dairies would be fantastic opportunity, and there's numerous places where there's, they're in close proximity that we can try to do that, and that's what, that's my goal, is to find one that has a cluster where two, three, or even five dairies feed into one large digester. That way, it makes it more economically feasible for it to be built, and it really shows the overall results of what we're looking for. So that's what I'm hoping for. That's what I'm hoping for, is the multi-dairy type of one.
Al Valley has a lot of very close...
Yes, we do. I have a map on my wall showing all the dairies in the county, and it's in a little pink dot for each dairy, and there's a cluster, and Pixly is about the epicenter of everything, so, yeah.
Well, if you do the math on methane and how it provides... Well, if you do the math on methane and how it provides over twice the greenhouse gas that all the vehicles and that run through the valley provide, we can't afford to go anywhere else but to the digesters.
Yeah, the digesters, right now, as I said, the, the digesters' technology has, has improved vastly over. The, the manure itself, that, that isn't a super high BPU. It doesn't, it's not as efficient. If we supplement the feed with fats, fog, fats, oils and greases, or supplement with others, it really picks up the, the, the intensity for, for that. So, that might be a piece of that. And also, that goes good too because we wanna divert waste from our landfill. So, so it all kinda fits in and, and it's definitely the direction things are going.
You know, I had to, just to expand a little bit on what Mike's saying about working with the county. I happened to go to the United, Western United Dairyman Conference up at Tanaya Hall, Tanaya Lodge this last week. Tough duty, but somebody had to ask.
Who are you?
And I happened to sit there at lunchtime with the, two of the engineers from the Calgen and they, they're from Washington State. And they, they just could not keep talking about how easy it was and how cooperative this county was, how they worked with the, the, some of the opposition and how they hammered things through. And, and both sides, you know, came, all sides came to the table on this thing and they, they just were not used to, to counties working that well with them and they were really impressed and they wanna come back.
Say that when Gene was here.
I tried to, Bill, but you had the microphone.
Got a text.
Okay, any other comments from the Directors? Otherwise, we're moving on to item seven, Future Agenda Item. Do we have any?
I don't know if this is a Future Agenda Item, but I, you know, I scan the Tulare County Sheriff's website all the time for news, of course. And one of the news items this past week was an attempted murder at Bullfrogs. So, I'm just wondering, did, is there a review process where they're gonna come back to us on incidents related to their special use permit?
They have a specialized kind of progressive enforcement in Bullfrogs, the detail of which would require them at some point to, yes, come back to this Planning Commission.
Yeah, and the time of the incident was after midnight too, and I remember we talked about that. So, I'd be interested to see what's going on in terms of that.
Well, but that wasn't a condition, was it, that they close at midnight?
Well, no.
No, I mean, this is a...
That's it. We were talking about it at the time. So was the sheriff.
And it's a Larry issue. This is tangential. This isn't necessarily a land use issue you're talking about, but it does give us the opportunity to look into their, their permit and give you more detail on that.
Okay, no more, any more future items. Otherwise, we're gonna move on to the very last one, adjournment of the meeting. We will reconvene on April 8th, same time, same station.
After midnight.